Okay.
Okay, hi.
Yes, also.
Hi.
Great, we can hear you. That is wonderful. Okay, so Leo sent a message that he can't make it today, that he trusts us fully to edit the brochure as needed, and then he generally had good feelings about it. Cornell, have you heard anything from Sonia or Jeff? Okay. Well, we're a couple of minutes after four, so I think we should just get going. Everybody comfortable with it?
Yep.
All right, so this is a search committee meeting. And we're gonna have the record show that Councillors Laraway, De Marit, Powers, and Marx are present, and that Cornell Knight is there on Zoom. The first order of business is to take a look at the draft brochure that SGR created for us. Does everyone have the ability to see it on their screen? Okay. So, I guess we could do two things. We could either start with the issues I've flagged in the email, or we could start with other issues that any of you have and wanted to bring forward. Which way do you guys want to start?
Start your stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
Semi.
Might spark another thought? All right, sounds good. So, the first question I had was regarding photos. You got the second version from...
Yeah.
Wait, I took that out already. I've already have a second draft of this without the picture on page two and community that we had asked them not to use. So, that came in an email. Also, in the same mail, I think, is it attached? Can you see that?
Yeah.
So, I also put, I put it in the drive. So, if you look at the Town Manager Search Information Drive, it's in there, and it says brochure or no. So, alphabetically, it should be your second file.
So, the one that I'm looking at immediately, second page, just now that you're...
Yeah.
That's correct. The one that has the aerial photo of Orano?
Yeah.
Dan, do you want to take a look? Can you say?
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay. So, that photo was replaced as soon as I asked, and we've got an aerial photo of Orano there now. My question is really just, I don't know, but this is a section talking about community, and we don't have any pictures anywhere that show any people in them. They're all landscapes, and they're beautiful landscapes because Orano's gorgeous. So, that's wonderful, but I was wondering if this would be a place to put a photo that had some people in it, since we're talking about the people in the community, and I didn't know what any of the rest of you thought about that. I spent a few minutes to look through the photo drive that's in shared drive and flagged a few that I was like, maybe these ones would work. Not they have...
I know. I, I saw the ones you're talking about, and I like them. Yep.
So, I don't know if you want to pull up the photo drive, maybe, or maybe just say, does anybody else on the... Do you want to consider putting a photo with people in it? Or do we just like...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's like 20 of Matt and then it picks up Matt.
I know. Like, I'm just not that, I think it's a problem. But I know.
But we do have an aerial photo at the end. So, if you scroll to the end, under compensation and benefits, there's another larger scale aerial photo. So, I don't know, I thought we should maybe at least look and see if there were some photos of people that we wanted to consider. Do folks have the ability to open up the photo?
Yeah. I like the, I do like the international student paddle because it's very photogenic, and, and it's kind of cool that they're all doing something that's very Orano. There's not, I don't know many places that would have a work canoe.
Right. Yeah, that was my favorite one. I took a quick look through, but again, there are a lot of photos in there, and other people might have different opinions. I thought that the one with the students carrying the canoe was nice. Looked like people were having a great time and doing something outdoors, and it was close up enough that there were faces, which seemed good to me. But there are also others, there's a trunk and treat one. They're alphabetical in the photo drive, so if you're looking for the titles I gave you, if you scroll alphabetically, but also you should just look, and if there's a different one, you want, speak up.
I really like the summer concert one with a couple of them are over each other, but I love one that might be too identifiable.
Let's see. So, I didn't, do you know what that one is called?
Summer concert.
Okay, let me look at that. So, I flagged Arts of Palooza one, which was sort of a street scene during Arts of Palooza, Truck and Treat, International Student Paddle, and then a couple that aren't people, but are at least like outdoor, there are people, but further away, people that are doing outdoor activities. So, you're looking at summer concert?
Yeah, that would be a great one.
Where's summer concert, which...
Summer concert one.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it should be out of that.
Yeah, I'm just getting there. Okay, summer concert one. Yep, so let's add that one. And it's a bit blurry on the bands, right? Which is fine, as long as it doesn't bother SGR. I mean, if we like the idea of people, I was just thinking, we give them a couple of choices of ones that have people in it, and ask if they think one of these would work, because we'd like some people in there somewhere, or some outdoor activities, people doing outdoor activities. So, do we want to choose three or four that we're comfortable with and just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. I did feel like the Arts of Palooza one. No, did you, or is that just filter?
I don't know, just, that's how it came to me, so that's how I put it in.
It was a little... Oh, yeah, and it's like, it's like a second tone thing.
Yeah, it looks like from the eighties, even though I can't see it, but I mean...
Yeah. All right. You like a summer concert one, is that right, Dan?
I did, yep.
Anyone else? Matt likes international student paddle. How do you feel about that?
And I liked the Nordic skiing, too. It's really beautiful, so...
Beautiful shot on the Nordic, work skiing.
Yeah, it was nice. It's nice to go. And that, that you've already checked on permissions of people that they're okay.
Yeah, so the Nordic skiing two is Annie.
Right.
The Arts of Palooza was given to me when, when I requested that it would be okay, like it was already on there, something on there, like already given out as a thing. So, this is what was given to me when I requested. And the international students was the same, like...
So, probably Arts of Palooza came from Connie Carter.
Yep.
International students came from Sarah Jockin.
Yep.
We can certainly double check.
The trunk or treat, I did not.
But they knew when they sent them that they were being sent for a brochure. So, my assumption is that each of their organizations already had the correct releases signed. If you want us to double check, I can text, but...
I think, I don't think it makes sense for this, probably, but I just like, I really like this photo with the student soccer, with the perfectly framed rainbow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
It's lovely.
That's my son.
The one with the water bottle or the one... Oh, I didn't know she was there. Hi, Sonia.
Hey, folks, how's it going?
How are you?
Good. If I could get promoted to panelist, that would be helpful.
Pete, can you take care of that?
Sonia, I just did, and it said you declined, so I'm gonna try again, okay?
Sorry about that, it must have timed out. Let's try again. Join as panelist.
I think that's my, if it's the one with a kid running across, they all have masks on, and you can't see their faces, so that, I did not ask permission for that.
My favorite, obviously, is one that Dan initially suggested. For people on the back seeing a band, but just wanted to show more people than like necessarily what... Jeff, just apologize, just give help, stop it.
Okay, so, summer concert one has multiple votes.
I mean, if I could, we might just put several.
Right, are the other ones, just to hear any of them that folks don't like? And also, there was a suggestion to add this soccer one. Is that, or do you feel like, I love the rainbow, I just wasn't, I really spoke to community in spite of a barren looking field, but it's a great photo.
But that's why I said I don't think it's right.
Okay. So, summer concert one, Sonia, did you see these photos? Are you in the shared drive?
I am not currently in the shared drive, can you? But I can get into it, can you describe where they are?
Sarah's email from today, it's like one of her first moments of that.
You sound a little bit like you're underwater, Rob, could you speak up a little bit?
If you check Sarah's email from earlier today, it's the, the lake in the first book that I have.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Um, so, there's all couple of the one, summer concert one. Has anyone looked at the truck and tree one yet? Shows Barbershop, I believe, and one of the fire trucks says trunk trees.
There's nobody working in her, or her Barbershop anymore.
Yeah, and Degress Jewelers doesn't exist.
Yeah. I know, it's about, how many years old do you think this one is? Two years, maybe?
That's definitely like a Spiderman one, Spiderman.
It's a nice Spiderman costume.
He's wearing masks, so...
It's before COVID, you think?
Pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID. I like the plaid shirt myself, was very main.
That's pre-COVID, this found. There goes a shot briefly where Degress Jewelers was.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, this one's out for you, of the ones we're sending them. Not favorite, so we'll take it off the list. Okay, that one's off. All right, so international student paddle, Arts of Palooza one, summer concert one. What about Nordic skiing two, which is gorgeous? It's not immunity, but it is someone outside in nature, which we talked about a bunch in that section. I noticed a lot of the photos, I know fall is supposed to be the thing that people love the most, and it sells things and whatever, but we have a lot of fall pictures already in this brochure. So, it'd be nice to have something that was a pretty winter shot or summer, like the ones...
There's a man, skating one?
No, it's the Nordic skiing two.
Yeah, no.
It is.
Rob and I are just looking.
Oh, right. Nordic skiing two?
It's not this nice.
Do you see Nordic skiing?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. I mean, it's person alone, it's a gorgeous landscape, and they're outside doing outdoor activities. Do you want that one in the list or not?
I really like Pusha Skating five, if that's not on the list yet, that's pretty cute.
Pusha Skating five. Okay. Um, Pusha Skating five.
It's a little bit, I guess it's not the sharpest image, looked better in small form.
Sonia, this is one with three people out in the middle of the lake?
It's like six or seven people out on the middle of the lake.
I don't think that's five.
Oh, well, there's...
Well, there's two fives. Hmm.
All right. Yeah.
Oh, the chain of people on the lake, okay.
I think, just in terms of the function of adding a photo, I'm inclined to go for photos that have more people in them, because we're already sort of, we have to be less, just, you're trying, I think, having just one person or something. What I, which is why, like, I love the Nordic skiing one that you brought up, Sarah, and I think it has a lot of virtues to it, but I, I wonder if next, if some things, when like a bunch of people gather, they're only gonna have her before.
Makes sense to me. So, the only one we haven't looked at that's on the original list is Snowshoe Yoga. Have a vote on Snowshoe Yoga, yes or no? Sonia, they're alphabetical if you're looking in the drive, if you haven't figured that out.
It's interesting. I like it, it's fun.
I know, and you want to go?
Love the lighting, it's...
Dark?
Yeah.
Okay. So, not that one? Any vote, Sonia?
Yeah, I joined just late enough in this topic that I don't feel like I have the full context, so I will leave it to you folks who have kind of talked about and know what's been selected so far. I, I don't really have a strong feel.
Sorry, just so you're up to speed, in that same email, there's a file attached at the bottom, which is the Most Rethan Virgin, SGR's brochure.
Great.
And we're looking, oh, on this page with a community. We were noticing that it's another aerial shot of town, and we have a lot of aerial shots, and big skate shots, and no people in the photos. So, we were gonna suggest back to SGR some of all photos with people in them. That could go in any section. So, that's what we're talking about.
Great.
So, what I have currently is international student paddle, summer concert, Arts of Palooza one, and maybe Pusha Skating five with the chain of people. Is that correct? Snowshoe Yoga's out because of the lighting. Okay. So, that's one, two, three, four, that I could send them with a suggestion that unless they have a reason why they really think that all landscapes is the way to go publicity-wise, I'm open to that, if they come back with a reason, but if not, maybe they could see if one of these ones would work with some people in it.
Yeah, I think so.
Do we all feel good about that?
Great.
And are Leo and I authorized if they do come back and say, please don't... To just say, go with the aerial thing they already had?
Spot.
Okay. Are you good with it, thumbs up? Okay, great. Was there any other photo, anyone had objection to anywhere, any prompts photo-wise?
Good on that.
Okay, great. Um, there was a mistake, just Bell's IGA for some reason is listed as Callis IGA, I don't know why. So, I'll just ask them to correct that. Is there any other sort of mistake like that, that anybody has found while proofreading? That's just a factual error or typo?
But it counts Shurola as areas key resort, and area, it's two hours and five minutes Shurola. I just, the area is, I mean...
Yeah.
Ask Cornell, Cornell's the one who can speak to that and leave.
I know, I know, coming from Texas, two hours definitely be in the area.
Yeah, I guess.
But, but...
Sorry, six in the morning, so we haven't shot, you know.
Where is this? What section are you looking at?
Under... Many's... I'll find it. I'll find it. Oh, it's on the second page in the, there's the last paragraph, very last sentence. Numerous years, which is Shurola, which, so, you know...
I'm okay with it, but if you guys aren't, I mean, my kids go all the time, so I'm okay with it, but if others don't...
Oh, it's on, I'm just putting my area.
Yeah.
Sarah, I think the, the reason it says Callis IGA is the previous owners used to own both Callis IGA and then they opened the Orano IGA, so...
I do think it should say Bell's IGA, because that's what staff had written on staff's profile you sent to SGR? Or...
Yeah, I think, I think we can change it, but I think that was the re, I think that's why it was originally there, but we, we can change it to Bell's IGA.
Staff had it as Bell's. So, I looked at the staff, the profile document, you guys had listed it as Bell's IGA. Somehow, in the SGR transfer, it turned into Callis, so...
Okay.
It is Bell's IGA, we're all comfortable with, okay. Put it up. Um, all right, any other typo-y kind of things? The third point you brought up was that there are links at the bottom of this. If you go all the way to the end, there are resource links. And one of those was for Orano Economic Development, and staff was working to update that page. Last I looked, Cornell, it looks like perhaps now they have fully updated that page. Can you speak to that?
Mitch was gonna work on that, and he is in Augusta today for the evaluation appeal on the, that apartment complex, so I will check with him tomorrow.
I think he has, because it's substantially different than what it looked like when I looked at it yesterday. So, I think he's made a good number. I, I don't see, when I looked at it just before the meeting, I no longer see links that are not correct, that don't go anywhere, or, you know, information that isn't correct, with the exception of a, when you click on the Orano Economic Development Corporation link, it takes us to a second town website page. And I had flagged this, Cornell, for you and Mitch earlier in the day, that these numbers aren't, these phone numbers aren't correct anymore at the bottom of this page. So, I think this still needs to get looked at, the email address here and the phone numbers here. I don't think, at least a good number of these aren't correct anymore.
Okay, well, make sure they're fixed by tomorrow.
That's not... I guess on the resources page, if you guys take a look at that, is there anything that folks want as a resource that isn't there? I had brought up, do we want to list a link to the fact sheet that Sonia put together about the community survey results? I know we worked a lot of adjectives from that, Dan worked into the job description, but it is kind of visual, and it does give a candidate a really good sense of what the community had to say that, you know, in the survey they were looking for, so I didn't know if we wanted to ask SGR to add a link to the fact sheet about the survey results.
That's nice of you. Like that. And it seems like there's no sign, it would be like...
What do you think, Sonia?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it. No, no reference either way, really.
Same with me.
I don't have a strong one.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, I, I just thought, I brought them, I picked them up to bring them back, because they were extras, and I looked at them, and I went, oh, this is, if I was applying, I might want to see this. Like, it's interesting to see what the community had to say, but...
So, the next thing?
One thing is that I'm not entirely sure on the link to that, Cornell. It's on the website right now, on the town website, under the manager search, but you have to click a fair number of buttons, and then it comes up as a PDF. And I don't know if there's an easy way to link straight to it, as opposed to just the page within which it's a PDF. Do you know what I mean?
It won't be short enough.
Right. But I feel like...
But...
I feel like we need a shorter, I mean, I wouldn't want to send them, well, I guess we could send them just to the page, but I thought it'd be better to send them directly to the survey results. Is there a way we can do that on Pete's end?
You're cutting, you're cutting in and out on the manager search link, is that what you're...
If you go to the manager search page on the website?
Yeah.
Then within that, you can click and get to the survey results, but I can't, I'm not the best techy person. Maybe I'm missing something, but I didn't see any obvious way to get a link that takes us directly to the survey results.
There's a...
Oh, okay. Okay, we can, we can do that.
Seeing what I got, but I, I don't get a link, I get... Anyway, if we get a link directly to the survey results, as opposed to just the whole page, what I would think they would want?
Yeah. You were talking about the, the thing that we never... Yeah, I, I can email you something right now.
Why don't you email it to Cornell and I?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Anyway, yes, put it in, no, don't, ask SGR about it. All right, that's a yes. Yes, Dan, you don't care?
I don't care.
Okay. Um, and the last one I had was regarding immunity section, where, where the language that Jeff and Rob wrote. The way that it was rewritten, I felt like it kind of implied in the language that the Penobscot Nation and people are not still living here. Anytime I hear ancestral home, I, it has connotations to me that it's something in the past and not present. So, I didn't like SGR write of this, and I had a suggestion, we get rid of the phrase there. Start right away off with Orano offer small-town connectivity and big university opportunities on the edge of the Maine wilderness, period. Second paragraph, exactly like it is, and then third paragraph rewritten to be the language that Rob and Jeff actually originally wrote. And that's all in my email, I can read it out if people want to hear it, but I mostly just want to hear people's feedback about, does anyone, but you want to see that change?
Yeah, I appreciated that edit, Sarah. I think that it clarifies and really appreciated it.
And there seems to be space on page four. Yeah, so, like, creating a huge...
Okay. Um, all right, so that's a yes. It also takes away the part that sort of implied that Orano and Old Town all became Orano, which Old Town might not appreciate. Okay. And the other thing later, after this email went out, I realized that the salary range we talked about was not here at the end, under compensation. So, I sent an email to Alyssa asking about that, and she confirmed that that was just an error, that it should be there. And they, in their defense, they pushed this out much faster than normal for us. We asked them to get it back to us in seven days, they usually do eight to 10. So, I don't think, Alyssa was saying it didn't go through every level of proofreading yet, that it would go through, and she apologized for not putting it there, but I'm assuming that we all want it there. Alyssa told us it was important to have. So, salary range would go in the compensation and benefits section. That's everything I have. What else do folks have?
This is for my viewing, this was your email earlier. And they covered everything that was glaringly in me, but...
How do you guys feel emotionally about it?
I like it. I like that, I mean, I was reading the text, especially the text we worked hard on, on the candidate and the job description. I liked it, and I, I thought the shots they have of the nature in Orano are beautiful. I thought they did a great job picking. I liked, how did you all feel?
The village, the choice of the town office, and the science, like, stories down at the library.
Yeah.
That was a nice touch. Really awesome children. And I, I just love the river so much, so I'm pleased to see that. I take pictures from that branch all year round.
Yeah. Thoughts, Sonia? Dan?
I like it. I'd come work here.
Yeah.
You got paid.
Okay, Cornell, any feedback from your end?
All set.
I've got, I've got... I don't work with me, me primarily.
Sorry, Cornell, what did you say?
Nothing, I'm, I'm all set, let's get an ad out.
Yeah. So, that's the third, that is the other piece of information that I did follow up with Alyssa to find out kind of how this would work. So, she wrote back that the, the job description itself, the job description that we finalized at the last meeting is an internal Orano document, so they're not gonna format that or do anything with that. We formatted it the way we want. The brochure should encompass everything from the job description that we thought was important, because folks are not being referred to that job description. So, I felt like everything that needed to be here was here from the job description, but if folks want to take a few minutes and pull the job description up, to be sure you feel like that, that might be important. She said that the brochure will be on their website and on all of their publicity outreach tools and on every website that we have said we want to pay to have it posted on. If we put the job description on our website, they can put a link to that in the job brochure if we want, but she said they don't typically do that, that everything that they feel needs to be here is here. So, I felt okay, but if you all want to take a look at the job description, that might be good. And once, once the brochure is approved, meaning we have approved it and they have it ready to go, she'll send us links to the search page, which will include a link to the brochure and a link to apply, and a separate link directly to the brochure. And then she recommends that we get those posted on our search page of our website as soon as possible, those links that they will send us. So, Cornell, does that make sense to you from that email that she sent us?
From Alyssa?
Yeah, saying that she'll send us the link for sure and to the, how to, a link to apply, and that we should put those links on our website also.
Right, put it in the, on the search page, right?
Yep. And as I said, she said, if we want a link to the job description, she can put that in the brochure, but they typically don't. Do you feel any need for that, Cornell?
No, I don't think so.
Anyone else hear that?
No, I was wondering sort of what I thought is about where the job description, that's what they live or you mean on our website? Is that where, perhaps, when they go to it, receive, or we, we... about where the job description does ultimately live or even on our website, is that where, perhaps when they go to it, proceed or we, we, this, we, we sort of haven't discussed yet.
Right, so the brochure itself, um, this brochure, I mean, SGRs, we need to put the link for this on the website very obviously. Either we choose to have a link also to the job description, I guess on our own website, that's up to us. SGR is not gonna use it unless we ask them to. We can use it if we want, or the job description that we've written can be an internal document that, you know, lives for us when we're hiring and interviewing. That's up to us if we also want the job description there along with the brochure. People have opinions about that? We can also add it later if we don't put it up now and you all read it and decide next week you want it added.
I think the the, the more, well, I guess we have it as an internal guiding light, then we can just look at whether these people come, if you wanna have it there to weed out people might feel like they don't fit perfectly, then I guess we could also put it out. I don't think that'll be our problem.
Well, I imagine perhaps when we, we have candidates that get more in the process, it's something we can share with them to sort of be a little bit more detailed about sort of over expecting what, what is the
I also don't have any problem if we just wanna put it on the website, nor do I have a problem if you all want SGR to put a link on it on the brochure. I mean, if it it has sections that aren't on the brochure, what's on the brochure primarily from this is uh, education and experience. And Dan, did you take a look to see which parts of the personal characteristics? I think they used all of that, didn't they?
Yeah.
I think all the personal characteristics made it on. And most of the ideal candidate, but not the bullet pointed list about, did it, did that make it on? No, I guess it says experience in, it's in a list form. Instead of a, it's there, it's in a list form instead of in bullet points, but it's there. Um, education and experience is primarily there. Um,
That's what kids.
So I think what's not here, what's not here would be the first page with the major areas of responsibility. Um,
I, I, I guess I would think that a lot of things with major responsibility, uh, most people find, once I've made a few decisions, who would understand these, uh, but of course, I think we can talk more about these maybe things. I mean, if most of the rest of the education, it is an orange, it's part of sort of what somebody understands to manage to do. Um, she's on the brochure, it feels like it'd probably be a good redundant, although it is like organized differently. You're sort of see it under categories, typical. I don't feel strongly putting it on.
I don't know, I feel like if you read this brochure, it's just what you want it for.
Yeah. My inclination is not to ask SGR to put a link to it, since that's not typically what they do and to let them do their own process. If we wanna put a link on our own website, I don't think there's a problem with that, so maybe we do that as a compromised position. As I recall, Jeff really liked this bullet pointed list under major areas of responsibility when he commented on the job description. I think that was a part that he really liked, so I don't know, my inclination is maybe put it on the website so that Jeff's list is there visible. Cornell, does that make sense to you if we went that way?
Or on the job description?
Yeah, if, if we had a link to both the brochure, how to apply and the job description, all three on our own website.
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine.
All right. Okay, um, is there something else brochure wise that I am not catching or that we wanna talk about any? I like it. I think it looks good. I feel really good about the work we did to get it there. When I read all the language, I was, this is really great.
Did, did you talk about the uh, education experience? I'm sorry, the, the audio is cutting out a fair amount, so um, did you pick up on the education where it says requires a degree in public administration?
Uh, Eric?
Oh, yeah, right on education experience.
I did not catch that, which we had asked them to take out. Um, what page are you on? Six?
Yeah.
It's a
Good catch, Cornell.
Oh, but it's six.
Did, we did ask to just, we were gonna have a de, a degree, but not necessarily in public administration, right?
Okay, um, so it should say the position requires a bachelor's or an equivalent combination. And a master's degree is preferred. Do we want it to say?
Well, we just give what we wrote down last time and
Uh, okay, so nothing about public administration or business?
Guess what we have?
Or do you wanna put preferred?
So I was wondering, what preferred under public administration or business? Requires a bachelor's degree, public administration or business preferred or an equivalent combination. Do we, I mean, I don't care, I honestly don't care that their bachelor's degree is in, I can't remember what their master's degree is in. The bachelor's degree, I, it could be anything and that would be fine by me. Um,
I agree.
Um, so the position requires a bachelor's degree or an equivalent combination of credentials and experience in a related field. And a master's, how about colon, a master's degree? Anyway, is preferred, we just wanna get in to what it's preferred in or just not even bother. Take it up. Okay, so exactly the language we had at the top description. Got it. Okay, I'll take that up. Catch, Cornell, thank you. Um, anything else? Wait, thank you, Sonya. Cornell are good. Nothing else that relates to the brochure?
No, I think I'm good.
This was gonna be work, so I'll be up and see you loads.
No trouble. Cornell's doing the same. Um, so the next item was just an advisory committee update. Um, I think that's probably just mostly me. Um, the update I have is that um, the email went out to all of the folks who had volunteered, asking them to respond back with um, confirming they were still interested after hearing exactly what they were committing to um, and getting us the schedule. So I heard back from about half of the people. There are about twenty people who had volunteered. I've heard back from about ten. Um, but they were given a deadline of a week from today on Valentine's Day to respond, so I imagine that I will hear back from the others. Um, knock on wood, so far it seems like people's schedules aren't seeming too impossible to work with. Um, so that's encouraging. Um, I'm trying to think, is there any other specific update on the advisory committee? You all know that we'll meet on the 21st to make a decision in executive session on the composition of that committee, that it needs to be eight to 10 people. So if all twenty people responded to it'll be a hard choice for us and we'll have to choose how to limit that to a smaller number. Um, if some of you know some of the people who have put their names forth and you want to ask me afterwards whether they have responded to my email, that could be helpful because I don't always have cell phone numbers for folks. Um, and it might be nice if haven't responded by Monday to be sure that someone is texting as well as emailing, just in case there's a typo in the email they sent us or some such thing. So if you all know, if you think of their names forward, you wanna check in with me, feel free. Um, I have emailed everyone to the email address they gave us. Um, I don't think I have any other update on the advisory search committee. Do you, Cornell?
No.
Um, so then our third item was to take a look at the non-disclosure language that came from SGR that was also in the email that I sent. Um, actually, the email Amanda sent. There is an attachment with that non-disclosure language. Um, Cornell, has our lawyer taken a look at this yet?
Did you say town attorney?
Sorry, has our town attorney taken a look at this language yet and said good to go?
Yes, he has, and he's fine with it.
Okay. So all we did was take the language SGR had sent us and make some changes because there was a different name for the kind of committee, another town called it. And where it said city, we put town and, you know, we went through and checked that sort of thing, but otherwise this is SGR's recommended language with those small kinds of tweaks. Anybody have any concerns with it?
Sounds very big at least to me.
Very proclamation based. I wasn't expecting all of the where. It feels like our proclamations. Um, if they did, it does look like it requires a notary. So Cornell, that'll be important that when we have the first advisory search committee meeting and folks are signing this, we'll need to have a notary present at that meeting.
Right. Or they could stop by the office sometime during the day.
Yeah, I think it might be easy if we're able to do it at a time, which during the day when we have one here on staff, that would be the best and easiest and people wouldn't have to stop by, so fingers crossed that we can schedule that first meeting for such a time. On the NDR, NBA language, sorry, unless someone else has something. Um, and I'm, we're, as I know now, we're still on schedule for the tentative color coded schedule. Um, I'll get these changes to Alyssa in an email and CC Cornell and Leo on that um, tonight. And then that in SGR, I was hoping to list the job between the 12th and the 15th. So that's next week. Um, and I think we should be on track for them to be able to do that if we get them our suggestions today and they send us back a final proof to look at. I think we could hopefully stay on schedule, which would be great. Um, but any public comment? Do we have any members of the public?
None online.
Okay. I think we are adjourned.
Nice.
Thank you all.
Okay, bye now.